I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all very much. Gonna start the meeting as we.
Now do with this reading real quick. This meeting of the Burlington Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote access and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. All right, kick things off with the citizens' time at six sixty. Does anybody in the room who would like to come speak? Mr. Praswati, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. My name is Sunil Praswati. I've been here before. I don't, honestly, I don't like to be coming here for this particular reason, but I don't have any other choice. We just took the place for liberty and justice. We know that one cannot be without other, both goes together, liberty and justice. And I have one question, it's multiple question for all of you, that what will you do if you or your family go through an abuse by the town? When they abuse the power, we entrust with them. What will you do and what kind of justice will you expect? And what do you expect me to do so I can provide justice to my family when they have suffered? So there's the question I have, if anyone wants to answer that.
Well, Sunil, as, as we've explained during citizens' time, the board doesn't typically respond during questions immediately. We try to take, you know, thoughtful time to answer back questions that are brought during citizens' time. I will say, however, you and I have had this conversation a couple of times, both via email and in person. And I do apologize that you feel as though the town has not properly looked into your situation. If we'd like to continue the conversation as we have, I'm happy to do so. But, you know, I've, I've made my case to you, and I'm not sure how much further we can really entertain the conversation.
So I feel that my family has not received the justice. And do you want me to go and start a lawsuit? So that is the only way we can get justice, or there is something you can do to help get me the justice?
Again, Sunil, you know, I've, I've laid out for you the facts from the town's side of things. If you honestly feel that you need to call the Attorney General's office, or that you feel that you need to sue the town, I'm not going to tell you not to do those things. I encourage you to, you know, because we are doing things we believe are fair and just, as I've explained to you, okay? If you feel as though that that is not satisfactory from your end of things, then by all means, as a citizen of the United States of America, take your just course. But I can't, you know, push things further, and I can't stop you. So, I mean, the ball is absolutely in your court.
Okay. So town will not do anything further, right? At this point, town, I feel like the senior management and town has done nothing, the town administrator, the town senior management, and the Board of Select has done nothing to hear my case or provide me justice.
Right, so.
And what you're saying is that I can do whatever I want, but because there is nothing more you will do, right?
Well, I think the operative clause there is that there's nothing more that we can do, meaning that you and I have talked about what has been done, and you have told me that you do not feel that those actions are satisfactory from your end of things. I don't know what much further I can do in my position, which is why I suggest that if you feel as though something more needs to be done, there are avenues to the state to take. But I can't sit here and, well, I, I guess I should say, I shouldn't sit here and say that we've done nothing, which is what you're implying.
Yeah, in my opinion, there is no justice we have received. When we take the oath of liberty and justice, you know, it means something, and I don't believe that my family has received justice. That means town has done nothing from that perspective. If town has done anything, we have not received any information on what town has done. And I would appreciate one more opportunity for one in-person meeting before I go to the court and start a lawsuit, because I don't see any other choice here. I don't like to do that, but I don't see any other choice. My, me and my family have suffered a lot, and I don't want it to go to waste. And it continued for a while, even after that, and it continues as we speak. So, so there has to be something, some improvement in the town at the end of the day. I personally do not like to sue the town that I love so much and where I live, but I don't see any other choice, as the Board of Selectmen feel that everything that can be done is already done, and we have no other choice.
So, so I'm, I'm more than happy to sit down and have another conversation with them, as I've said in the past.
That will be great.
I, I think that it is, it is a touch unfair to sit there and say that the town has done nothing for you. You know, we've not only remedied things that we've talked about, but we've put a lot of man-hours and time into having conversations and explaining that to you, and you've taken the opportunity to explain back that you feel as though it's not enough.
Yes.
If we've met a crossroads, then we've met a crossroads. But we can continue this, this conversation, and then you can pursue whatever action you feel is necessary.
That sounds good. I, I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate that there is a liberty that I'm allowed to speak here. I will drop you an email, maybe we can meet one more time before I take the matter to the court. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Is anybody here also for citizens' time? Okay, anybody online for citizens' time?
Chairman, star three, to raise their hand.
Oh, thank you, Paul. Yeah, so when everyone joins the room tonight, you're being automatically muted, so just go ahead and star three to raise your hand. Ms. O'Brien, I see your hand up, so we'll go ahead and take you off mute.
And then you can give your piece. Let me know when she's off mute.
She should have gotten a request, gotten mute herself.
Patricia, did you receive the request to come off mute? Sorry.
Yes. Yes. Am I off mute now?
You are. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Priest. I, I recognize that on the agenda is a sidewalk improvement program, and I also recognize that it's more related to how we're going to spend the money, and discussion about what kinds of improvements are being made. But I wanted to really just highlight that as a former member of the Town Meeting Transportation Committee, that there were a lot of conversations about prioritizing certain streets and the need for creating access in different areas of town. So I just hope and encourage Tom Hayes and the DPW team to, to take those kind of thoughts and ideas into consideration. I know the Recreation Department had strong interest in prioritizing certain connections to recreation areas and neighborhoods, and so I just offer that as some input from a resident. And I, again, kudos to Tom for relooking at the bottom of Peach Orchard Road. I think the new solution is perfect. It's gonna protect pedestrians and limit vehicle crashes. So thank you, Tom, and please do try to connect with other departments and the schools in recreation to prioritize which streets might meet pedestrian needs. Thank you.
Absolutely, Patricia. Mr. Strauss, I see your hand up. We're gonna go ahead and provide that request, you can come off mute.
Thanks, Chairman Priest. Yes, I wanted to echo Pat and, and say thanks again to Tom Hayes. Also, as a Town Meeting Transportation Committee member, I followed the meetings of the Select Board Transportation Committee. This would be a way to coordinate everything within town, so that the town spending is, is not just a little here and a little there, but the whole process of transportation with the town and coordinating all the different intersections that we talk about all the time, and make sure that spending is prioritized. So I think the report, when that comes out, will be very interesting, and it will be excellent to see all the different departments blended together and transportation prioritized as it's going to need to be. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there anybody else for citizens' time? Cherry, come on down.
Thank you, Chairman Priest. Cherry Ellis, Town Meeting Member, and since I heard the word sidewalks, I'll just chime in a bit, because I always walk on sidewalks. I have had conversations with you, the Chair, and also with Tom Hayes, and I want to thank them for having meetings about crosswalks. And I'd like to make sure that going forward, whether or not it's a combination sidewalk, crosswalk policy, but we, we start working on the crosswalks as well as part of the sidewalks, they're integral to the connections, and taken a bunch of interest in that over the last few months after the really horrific accident, and have noticed that there's sidewalk, crosswalks in need of desperate restriping and some signage. So I just want to put a plug into that again and continue the work on that over the winter, so maybe we can get some restriping and signage in the spring. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? Eileen, come on down.
Thank you, Chairman Priest. Eileen Sickler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. Now's the time, I suppose. I'm also a former member of the Transportation Committee, and I'm here just to do a pitch for Safe Routes to School. There is an infrastructure program that's in place right now, and I think the application is due, I don't know, mid-November or something like that. But in any event, so this infrastructure plan is to provide roads and access to make it easier and safer for kids to get to schools. And this is anywhere from kindergarten to, to 12th grade. Funding goes from $300,000 to a little over a million. I believe that this program has given 35 million, 30 million, something like that so far in the last few years. So I would hope that we would collaborate with the schools and get our application in there for some serious money. That's, that's it.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm not going to put Rick on the spot, but I'm, I'm pretty sure Melissa Mazzardo of the school committee is pursuing that application right now, and I forget where it currently stands, but I'm fairly, I'm fairly sure it's its way.
I, I hope it's the larger grant, because actually, there was some email today with her saying that we've received funding for the signs and lines or something like that. That's small money, but still wonderful, 6K or something like that. But in any event, you know, this 300,000, over 300,000, it's a long process, obviously. So again, the application deadline is mid-November approximately.
Yeah, that sounds right to me.
Thank you.
It's on our radar, Speaker.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, it is on our radar. I know there's a lot of folks working, working behind the scenes to make this happen, so we can get some more funding for the, for the roads. Anybody else for citizens' time? Okay. All right, moving right along. First up, six, six, one, we got approval for AMC extension of hours. Is anybody from AMC here or virtually with us? If you're here virtually, raise your hand.
Let's see who I usually see. Okay, I mean, we can take it without, without them being here, but they're looking for extension of hours if they have in the past.
The weekend of November 11th, it's coinciding with the release of Black Panther, Wakanda Forever. The film premieres on Thursday, the 10th, so they'd like to include that evening in the request. So Thursday, November 10th, Friday, the 11th, Saturday, the 12th, and Sunday, the 13th. The last showing would let out around 1:50 a.m., all guests off-site by 2:00 a.m. If approved, they're saying they coordinate with Officer Outbridge to ensure proper detailed scheduling for the entirety of the weekend. And then it looks like addition, in addition to the 2:00 a.m. extension, they also are asking for the weekends of November, November 18th to 20th, as well as November 25th to 27th, with the last showing letting out at 1:15, and all guests off-site by 1:30. Again, detailed coverage to be decided. Okay. Paul, anything to add to that?
We do not, but they coordinate with the police department to make sure that we have the, any proper coverage we need from a detailed standpoint.
Okay. The board, questions, Joe?
This is probably with the fourth year they've done this, fourth or fifth year they've done this, and we've never had a problem with it, because they do shut down the alcohol, like everyone else in town. They just keep it open, because it's a big night for them, and the way things are going for all businesses in town, I see no reason not to support this issue. They've always been good with us.
Yep. Mike, anything?
Yeah, no, we've seen it before, and they do a good job with it. All good. Wakanda Forever.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, no, no history there. I'm satisfied with how they proceeded in the past.
Jim? All right, well, if there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to approve AMC extension of hours, written dates.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero. All right, we've got six, six, two up next, an approval for a Sculpture Park event, Pumpkin Patch, on this Saturday, yeah, the 29th, from nine to 11. I know Barbara, we're gonna take you off mute. Barbara had messaged Jim and I earlier, saying she wasn't feeling too great, and she asked to attend virtually, which is okay by me, so she's here.
So Barbara, once you're off mute, you can give us some details.
I believe I am off mute. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board for having me here tonight, even virtually, so I appreciate that accommodation. This coming Saturday, we are asking for your permission to have an event at the Sculpture Park. We're calling it Pumpkin Party at the Park. We will be having a local artist from Bilreka who will be demonstrating pumpkin painting on some large pumpkins, and we will be having small pumpkins that will be given to the first 100 children who arrive. We'll also have paint sets for them, so they can paint their own pumpkins, and the wonderful Wegmans is going to be providing free cider doughnuts for everybody. The event would run from nine to 11:00. I believe I filled out all the proper paperwork, and the police have been informed.
Okay. Jim, anything you want to add to that?
No, I just love the way that Barbara's bringing a lot of life to that Sculpture Park, and we have the ice cream social. Yeah, the kids came, had their ice cream, but I noticed that families were sticking around and taking pictures with the sculptures, so I'm saying that on every event we do, we're gonna have more and more people, you know, find or discover the Sculpture Park. That's one of Burlington's hidden gems. Not hidden gems, but gems.
All right, Mike, anything?
Yeah, cider doughnuts coming in, right there.
Joe, anything? Nothing. Mike?
No issues, something?
Okay, yeah, nothing from me either. Paul, anything to add on this?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's nothing further than I'll just make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Sculpture Park event this Saturday, nine to 11:00 a.m. for Pumpkin Patch. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero. Barbara, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Feel better?
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item six, six, three, which has been a wonderful hot topic floating around the town for the past month now, since Paul mentioned it back in September. We've got Mass Highway presentation here on the repaving and restriping of 3A Cambridge Street. Just as an FYI to everybody, this is not a public hearing, so depending on if folks want to add public comment, it'll probably be restricted to one minute of time. What we're gonna do is we're gonna hear from Mass Highway, allow them to have the time to give the presentation. You know, just as a reminder, this, this road is a, is a state-owned road, this is not our road. I do hear a baby in the background, someone could just make sure they're on mute, or if they have to be talking, okay, that's someone from Mass Highway. No worries, we understand.
I just, I just.
I go quickly from, hey, be quiet, so no, no, you're fine. And, and Mass Highway will also be holding a public hearing of their own for everyone to understand more on this topic on November 17th. If they have any further details tonight that they can provide us, that'd be great, but I just wanted to kind of lay that groundwork quickly. Paul, is there anything you want to add that I may have forgotten?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I just want to acknowledge that Representative Gordon came by to, to sit in around the discussion tonight, so.
And thanks for coming down. And we did put out an invite to a lot of boards and committees, so they could also come and listen to the conversation tonight, as, you know, this is a pretty big project coming our way next spring. So with that, whoever from Mass Highway is here who'd like to speak first, the floor is yours.
I appreciate that, and my apologies for the extra speaker we've got here. She's, she's a little fussy, mom is stuck in traffic, so she'll be home very soon.
No, we completely understand.
I'm gonna try to share my screen here. I've got a very short presentation prepared. Will you let me know if you're able to see it?
Yeah, nothing yet. Okay.
All right, are you able to see that?
It's, yeah, it just came up.
Perfect, okay. So my name is Pete Robleski, I'm with Howard Stein Hudson. We're the engineering consultant supporting Mastat on this project, and I just first want to acknowledge and, and a note of appreciation for everybody I've worked with in Burlington. It's been very great working with you and being able to push this project forward. A little bit of a background on this project, it's a maintenance pavement resurfacing job. So you can see approximately the limits are here from the Shawshahin River, and then it goes south to just below where the high school is. So the northern limit is in Bilreka, beyond Burlington, and then we're resurfacing the entire roadway here. What this map shows is pretty exciting. These are proposed bike lanes, and then bikes ride on sidewalks. This is, these bike lanes in red are all gonna be new.
Sorry, Pete, not to interrupt, would you mind zooming in a little bit for everybody? Just kind of get the map as full screen as you can for us?
Absolutely.
The, the TV here is about a good.
Yes.
There we go, thank you.
No worries. So the detail here is limited, but you can see that there are stretches of this red line. Those are gonna be new bike lanes that are on the road, and the yellow line are areas of sidewalk that's accessible by bike. So bikes are gonna have a continuous path of travel all the way from the beginning to the end of our project. You can also see here with sidewalk, we're gonna create a continuous path of pedestrian travel as well. And I don't want to get too specific on the new proposed sidewalk here, because some of these areas are actually expanding. So the existing sidewalks, you can see we have sidewalks almost the whole way for this corridor. Red is an infill area where we're replacing sidewalk where it didn't exist before, but there are gonna be some additional sidewalk locations added where it's sidewalk that's in poor repair or disrepair. And I'll pause there for a second if you've got any comments or questions before I move on.
Anyone from the board want to make a comment?
Can we get a copy of this map, or?
Sure.
I'm sure that we can.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll provide it to the people I've been working with. I'll, I'll send it to John, I don't know if he's on, but I'll make sure I get it distributed to Burlington. And then what you can see here is this is just a typical cross-section, and not to get too technical into the plans here, but what is existing on Route 3A, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, is one formerly striped lane in each direction. It's a two-lane road, and they're very wide lanes. And this is a typical example of what we're gonna be replacing that striping pattern with. Right now, we have over 40-foot travel width, and it's basically split into two lanes, which creates a lot of confusion for drivers going north or south, whether or not they're operating two lanes or one lane of traffic. The plan that we're putting together includes still those two directions of travel, as well as a buffer as wide as we're able to make it, and then a bike lane. We did traffic studies, we did vehicle counts, and ensured to as much as possible a degree that we won't be increasing travel times or slowing down traffic. And in reality, what we're doing is making a much safer condition. This is roadway that currently isn't striped for vehicles to drive side by side, even though that's how it frequently operates. The last slide here is a pretty cool aerial image we got from our drone that shows, this is a wind here, so just orient yourself. This is 3A, and it's kind of flipped upside down, it's almost like north is in the opposite direction, and this is the wind intersection. When we get to these, in order to ensure that we're not gonna disrupt travel to the minimum extent possible, we're maintaining the lanes and the configuration at all of the signalized intersections. So what that means is that when you come to a stoplight, if you've got two lanes and a turn lane now, it's gonna remain that way, and that'll help to keep traffic flowing through the corridor. The, my apologies, this is.
Keep rolling, Pete, you're doing a great job.
Oh, my goodness. So the, the two points I want to hit home on this project are, there is gonna be no right-of-way work included in this scope. So what that means is, anything that is outside of the state highway layout or public right-of-way cannot be included in this project. We're not gonna be doing any easements, we're not gonna be doing any encroachments, and all the work is limited to be within the state right-of-way. And the other one is that the, you know, this, this is a maintenance project. We've been able to include a lot of extra scope. We're, we're pretty excited about the continuous bike and pedestrian accessibility. We've coordinated with both the LRTA and MBTA to consolidate some of their bus stops to make them more ideally placed along the corridor for efficiency. And somebody mentioned in a previous comment about some crossings, we are including additional crossings on this project as well. They're gonna be striped across 3A, they're gonna have RRFBs, Rapid Recced Flashing Beacons, and those are those lights that flash, the two yellow lights when you cross the street that'll be accessed by push button. And, and yeah, for the most part, it's, it's a three-mile stretch, and it's, oh, the, the, I'm sorry, the, the main point of what I'm trying to accomplish here, I think one of you mentioned, and I appreciate it, this is not the public information meeting. There will be an official public information meeting on November 17th. Feel free to reach, uh, reach out to me for more information. I, I can share my email with anyone that's interested in this group, and that's when we'll go over more of the project specifics and give you more information on the details from the actual Mastat meeting. The purpose of this presentation is just to kind of go through, you know, basic limits of work and scope of the project, and to make sure that everyone in Burlington is aware of it, and to invite you to that public information meeting.
They're aware of it.
They're gonna be aware of it. Awesome. Pete, anything else before I turn it back to the board?
The baby said no.
The baby said no, I heard that, yeah. Baby's like, you're good, you're good. All right, all right, so to the board first, and then I'll turn it to staff who have questions, and then we'll come back to the board, and then we'll take a look at any public comments. All right, so board first. Jim, you want to start, any questions?
I want to get a copy of that presentation before I make any comments, and probably until the 17th, to see how residents feel about it before I comment myself.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pete, could you just elaborate on the, the November 17th meeting, time, place?
Sure, yeah. I'm, I'm not sure if Dan is in this meeting as well, but the, it's gonna be a virtual option, there'll be a way to call in, and I can follow up with the specifics of time. I think it's gonna be 6:00 p.m., but I, I will confirm that and follow up with this board after, after this call.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That meeting will be six, 6:30 p.m., and it's gonna be a Zoom, Zoom meeting. We'll, we'll be sending a link to everyone. Shortly, we'll, we'll have a flyer that gives the information on all the specifics of the public information meeting. But we're looking forward to that in November 17th. It'll be at 6:30 p.m. We'll go as long as we need to, answer all questions, and it should be a, a good informational, because we have plans. Yeah, we just don't have time to present over three miles of plans at, at this time right now, but the consultant's been doing a great job. This was, was gonna be just a pavement resurfacing project, and, you know, the district, working with the town, it was an opportunity for improvement, so we're making some striping changes to channelize traffic better, providing bicycle lanes and making sure that all pedestrian connections are there, improved crosswalks with high visibility, reflectorized pavement. You know, it's just, it's taken on a lot for, you know, changing this from just a resurfacing job. The consultant, Howard Stein Hudson, did a lot of work looking at signal timings and making sure we're not gonna change the level of service and provide, you know, a safe highway for all users, pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobile traffic.
All right, thank you, Dan. Joe, any questions?
No, I'm gonna wait for that, get that, this information from him, but I do have a lot of questions about the sidewalks.
Sure.
About the sidewalks, that's my big thing right now, is the sidewalks.
Yeah.
They're terrible coming down from Bilreka all the way down, so, but I haven't hit that yet, so.
Mike, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Pete and Dan, for joining us this evening, and to your, your baby and the dog, too. One of the greatest questions in Burlington lore is Cambridge Street, one lane or two, so maybe this project will finally solve that mystery. A lot of the concerns I've heard from residents and friends in town is the traffic impact. You just said that by taking this roadway as it's presently constituted, travel times and slowing down traffic will not, will not be impacted? Will it have the same level of service, even essentially cutting out a lane?
Yeah, to the. Yeah, to the, the greatest extent possible, that's an accurate statement. So, uh, like I said, there's, um, one of the ways that we've tried to, uh, ensure that we're not negatively impacting travel times is by keeping that lane configuration consistent as it currently is at a signalized intersection. So wherever there's a stoplight, we're going to keep the lane use the same. And what that means is that people will be able to get to their, you know, left turn locations, their right turn locations, that, um, town center area, you know, right in front of the shaws, uh, just north of, uh, Wynn. That area is too narrow, um, and there's too much, uh, vehicle traffic for us to be able to add a bike lane there. We, if we were to add a bike lane there, that would significantly increase travel times. So we, we didn't do it. We, we, um, provided bike accessibility on the sidewalks, um, for those areas so that cyclists would have uh, an access route to be able to navigate that corridor safely and not be forced to share the road with vehicles. Um, but in that, in that example, you know, when it would significantly negatively impact travel times, we, we didn't propose any cross section changes to the lane use.
As you can imagine, it's probably a tough concept for people to put their head around that we're taking away a lane and it's going to remain the same.
Sure.
How extensive has the study been on the traffic and are there comparable roadways in other areas that you've done this to? That we could look at and see, wow, they were actually right. It, it didn't really change much. I'd love to like go to, you have an example. I'd love to check one out.
So we've got some pretty sophisticated modeling software. We have both Sidra and Synchro analysis. Um, my apologies, I'm not a traffic engineer. We have very talented traffic engineers in our office who perform that analysis. And they're able to rate these intersections on a grading scale from A to F. Um, I can tell you right now that the existing, you know, Cambridge, uh, Boston 3A corridor is not an A performance. Um, and we're not the, I, I don't want to put a letter grade on it right now because I'm, I'm pulling from recall. Um, but we're not introducing a significant delay based on our modeling. And I'd be happy to share that output data. We've actually got, um, what's called a, a functional design report and it's a very detailed document that Mast dot requires. It goes through the level of service and all of the traffic conditions, the number of vehicles. Um, and we've got that, uh, we've already submitted a Mast dot. We're, we're undergoing a revision right now. So once that is revised, I think this week, I'd be happy to send over the final revised copy of the FDR, the functional design report. Um, and in terms of comparison projects, you know, I, I personally am not familiar with, uh, a project that operates much like this one with the, with the very wide single lane that sometimes operates as two. However, there are many examples of road diet projects where light roads go from four, from two lanes to one in a single direction or four lanes to two overall, where, um, level of service and, and traffic operations are detailed on how they, how they perform. Um, the results of the, the traffic study, the results of the, um, road diet process. Um, and, and, you know, I, I can, I can tell you that we're, we're not, we're not negatively impacting traffic to a significant degree. I can also tell you that, um, just based on state law, a lot of that is out of our control and we don't really have the option when it comes to, you know, following state protocol and Mast dot regulations. There are, there are federal and state laws that require us to provide bicycle accessibility, pedestrian accessibility, provide those accommodations. Um, we have minimum lane widths where we're not able to put back striping that is, you know, for a lot of these roads, it would require nine foot lanes if we were to stripe it as two. And that's more narrow than some of the wider trucks you drive on the highway that, you know, at least their side mirrors are, are poking out beyond nine feet. Um, there are a lot of constraints that limited our flexibility on this project. But within those constraints, we, we really do feel confident that we're putting out a product that'll result in the best, uh, combination of accessibility for all modes of travel along with not negatively impacting the primary, uh, mode of travel, which is vehicular. Does that answer a question? I'm sorry if I rambled a little bit.
A little bit. And lastly, thank you. Um, safety impacts, how did you find the road in your study that is the road a really unsafe road as it is and this will improve the safety condition on the road? Because that, that's a big, you know, a big consideration too.
Sure. So for, for safety, so that, uh, and I, I know I'm saying, I'm sounding like I'm repeating myself, but I want to hit home a couple of things. This project originated from the pavement maintenance office at Mast dot. And the reason that's significant is because pavement itself, the asphalt on the roadway is a, is a deteriorating asset. This project spawned from making sure the asphalt doesn't get into a condition, uh, significantly below its current state of repair. Because of that, it's everything on top of resurfacing the roadway, um, is, is an extra, uh, mitigation we're trying to squeeze in there. Now, to answer your question directly, in terms of a safety oriented project, uh, the, the last screen that I showed, the intersection at Wynn is one of the state top two hundred crash locations. And so that is an intersection where, um, safety improvements, you know, would be justified. We performed a road safety audit along with Burlington, Bilrika, the, the Burlington Fire Department participated, uh, Mast dot traffic participated, several other agencies, um, several other agencies participated in that road safety audit. And through that process, what we do, it's, it's a state formal, uh, a regular state process where we go through and identify, here are the little things and the big things. We, we name all these mitigations that are possible for that specific intersection because it's deemed a high crash location. So for example, some of the things we talked about are, you know, uh, retro reflective striping, uh, location of the crosswalks and stop bars, lane width, visibility on turning, the, um, orientation of the traffic signals, the type of traffic signals. You know, some, those are some of the things that are potentially addressed in this project. And then some of the really big scale things that are beyond the scope of this project. Things like, um, replacing the geometry of that intersection entirely. You know, that's a much larger project that's not going to be addressed here. We're keeping the curb where it is. We're staying within the limits of the curb. Um, but we're identifying those, those safety issues so that, you know, at least in our process, if we're not addressing all of them, we're documenting them, providing that information to the state and to Brit Bilwica and Burlington, those reports are available. And, um, and making sure that we've got it written down so that it can be addressed in the future.
Hey, thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, you know, I want to thank you both for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. Before I turn it to, uh, questions from the staff, which I see Liz's hand up and I know we have folks here in the room. I think that's something that we as a board need to be cognizant of, and I know that I've talked to, uh, Tom and Melissa about this is, you know, uh, assessing impact to, uh, secondary roads off of 3A, right? So when we think about, uh, roads like Skilton, um, you know, Center Street, Seer Street, uh, you know, things of that nature is that when this happens, what kind of, Brody Road, um, what kind of, uh, you know, traffic impacts might there be? Um, you know, obviously Peter, you're saying that, you know, the, the impact is, is, I won't say negligible, we'll say minimal. Uh, but you know, uh, that's an area that we can take action in, right? Um, and I think that that's important for us to focus on as, as, as things move forward. Okay, um, I'm going to turn to staff. Uh, I see Liz, your hand up so you can go first. Um, and then we'll cycle around whoever else wants to talk. Is she off mute?
Yeah, she is.
All right. Thank you so much, um, Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to, um, point out from a planning perspective, um, that pretty much every, I, I previewed the plan myself, um, and kind of all of this really, um, kind of hits on almost all of the transportation recommendations that were, um, solidified in the, in the master plan, including actively encouraging multi motor transportation by providing bike lanes, um, encouraging sustainable, healthy living community, um, you know, improving pedestrian experiences. Um, so all of these things kind of check a lot of the boxes in the master plan and they're providing us with even more data. So it's not just what they're going to do, but data that we can use going forward. And I know that, um, I've been talking with Melissa Pentocla and we're looking at, um, kind of next steps for this roadway, um, in the town center as well. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that, um, you know, these are all good things, um, that I think are, um, gonna improve, improve, um, improve 3A.
Thanks, Liz. Any other staff? I know Sergeant Donat, you're here. Does anything you want to, uh, ask the Mass Highway while, while we got them? Not to put you on the spot.
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, no real questions, just, um, so that you are all aware, um, working with our partners at Mass DOT uh, to be concerned with or, or be cognizant of the impact to the traffic pattern as this engineering changes. Uh, folks have driven that corridor for decades, understand that it's two lanes. Um, and we just want on the radar, uh, the impact that it's had when that change goes from lanes to one. Um, we do expect it will be safer, uh, going down to one lane, uh, as they've chosen to do. But the impact as far as the educational component and having variable message boards on both sides, um, to warn motorists as they travel the corridor. Uh, and then also in those first few weeks of its implementation, um, my concern is getting the calls at the station about the number of people that are still choosing to drive it as, as two lanes. Um, with the resources that we have available for that week and working with our partners with, with Mast DOT to see how we can partner to have enforcement there through an educational component to keep people in compliance.
Excellent. Awesome. Thank you. Any other staff want to comment on this? I mean, I know, obviously I think we'll all be interested in attending the public, uh, session. Uh, I think it's important for the public to be aware that beyond Paul mentioning this to us and the very complicated plans that we're sitting along, uh, that we all kind of waded our way through, this is our first time having a chance to talk to Mast DOT as well. Um, so we're all kind of, you know, experiencing this together. Um, I think that, uh, you know, we're all curious to, to know more. Anyone else on the staff speak? I'm not putting you all on the spot. Okay. Uh, anyone else on the board want to make a comment before I open, open the minefield?
Just one quick question.
Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Timeline, Mr. Timeline on this?
Yeah, um, let me pull up my calendar here and I can get back to you in one second.
Okay, while he's doing that, um, can I get a show of hands of people who want to speak on this? So I can understand who we got in the room. Okay, I got three, two online. Okay. All right. So we'll keep it, you know, one to two minutes, uh, speaking time, just so we can keep this, uh, in a timely manner. Um, and I'll probably take folks in the room first and then go to online like I typically do for citizens time. Um, back to the calendar?
Yeah, in terms of schedule, you know, we're looking at spring of twenty twenty-three for construction. Specific date, you know, looking sometime in May, June realistically of when, when the contractor would get started.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, Jeff Debona, I saw you in the back. Why don't you come on down first?
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Debona, uh, town meeting member and I serve on the zoning board of appeals. I've lived here my entire life and I had a lot of people reach out to me asking me to come down and speak tonight and let their position be known. The way the traffic has been Burlington, it's been a disaster for many years. It gets gridlocked. I wanted to know, have you looked into it? There's been talk about it would become a gridlock by taking away the quote unquote one and a half lanes.
Yeah, yeah. So we have looked at that and, um, that'll be something that we go over in detail at the public information meeting. Um, I, I can tell you that we've done the, uh, analysis and the, and the study of the corridor, how it operates, what we call the no build condition, meaning how it operates right now. Um, and then the build condition, how it operates with the, um, with the proposed bike lanes. I can also tell you that when we initially, uh, presented this, when we initially began our design process, um, we along with Mast dot came up with two concepts. One was the one that we're going forward with, the bike lanes, and one was a center turn lane option. The center turn lane option would maintain one travel lane in each direction and then introduce a center turn lane, you know, for, for left turning traffic. And, um, based in our analysis that we put forward, there, there was not a significant benefit to travel times and to traffic by introducing that center turn lane. So even when it came to trying to mitigate those travel times and that congestion, we, we found that based on the traffic volumes and projecting and forecasting out eventual traffic volumes, there was not a significant benefit in introducing a turning lane into this project.
Yeah. And so I have input on that. Bill Rick is essentially that style of travel. And it will back up when people are going to take a left-hand turn. You have a line of cars. If you have two lanes and you have forty cars, two rows of twenty takes up less length than a, a single lane of forty.
That's true.
I don't want to be pushy with it. I've driven these roads for a long time and I'm not trying to be fresh saying this. I can tell you're not even in the same time zone as us because it's still light where you are. But I wanted to make my voice heard on this and it looks like it's probably better off I attend the information session in November.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have more information there, but I also want to encourage you, um, I, 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 you know, granting permission to whoever is capable, please share my contact information. We can, um, I can talk to you offline outside of this meeting about what we've done, um, to answer that and address that question specifically. We very much anticipated that this was going to be a, a big topic of conversation going from, as you called it, one and a half lanes to one. Um, and so that was something we were cognizant of for the whole design process. You know, yes, you're right. If, if you reduce it down to one lane and there's, uh, a turning, a left turning car and a constant stream of traffic in the opposite direction, that will increase, uh, that will increase delays in that situation. So, you know, we're, we're not blind to that. Um, again, I, I apologize. I'm not trying to sound like I'm passing the buck. I, I am not the traffic engineer who did the design in this project. And that person will be much better able to answer these questions. But I do want you to know that it's, it was a major part of our design consideration and we do have modeling and analysis which will show, you know, data that backs up our claims.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else, Jeff?
I think I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prashpati, I saw your hand up. Come on down. And also as a reminder for anyone who hasn't noticed before, uh, just please say your name, uh, any town, you know, office you may hold, your address, and then the, the floor is yours, just for the record identification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sunil Prajabati. Uh, I use, uh, Cambridge Street every day. And one question I have is I understand this is a resurfacing project, but are we also fixing the traffic light as part of the project? Because they are not safe for the pedestrian crossing that I know firsthand by my own experience.
Well, which traffic light and what do you mean by unsafe?
So the traffic lights at Bean Street and the one after that near Lincoln Donut. I take public transport, so I take the bus and I use that to cross and, uh, pedestrian crossing does not work. It does not ever light up.
Okay, so that's something that I will, uh, I'll notify the Mast dot district office about that. Um, but that's not, um, that is not in the scope of this project. We're not doing anything that includes, uh, signal timing or traffic lights or new, um, foundations, um, anything that's related to those traffic signals is beyond the scope of this work. But what you bring up is, is a totally, uh, fair point and, and relevant. And I, you know, on this project, I work with the Mast dot district office just about every day. So I'll make sure they're aware of that and, um, maybe they can go check it out and open up the cabinet and see if they can change the timing.
Yes, so the, the pedestrian, when you press the button, the light, it never lights up to allow the pedestrian to cross the street. It is broken. The traffic light is broken. So it will be great if you fix them. Thank you.
Yeah, that should be something, you know, not to speak for the district, but that should be something they'd be able to take care of.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sir, I saw you had a hand up?
Yes.
Come on down.
Uh, thank you. Um, my name is Jim McNiff. I live at fifty-nine Villagewood Drive in town. Um, I guess one of my questions would be, uh, because, because the graph was so small, I couldn't see where it began to work and where it ended. Repeat again exactly where it is planned to start and where it's planned to end it, what the points are.
So I will, let me see here. If it's okay, I'll share my screen again and just zoom in on, on Google Maps. Um, you can. So the northern limit is north of the town limits. The southern limit, are you able to, is this big enough? Are you able to see?
Not really, uh, I, will you have this on your website if I looked at it tomorrow or?
Um, I don't. I don't think there's anything.
See the field.
Yeah, so Peter, so basically, if I understand from my understanding of the project, it's going from the Bilirica Town Line.
Yep.
To the high school, correct?
Yes, we're going just past Birchcrest Street right here.
Okay, so from the Bilirica, the Birchcrest.
Crest.
Yeah.
All right. My second question would be regarding the, it's back to the prior point made, is the congestion, how have you considered, or I guess you've considered all the traffic that comes off of 128 to right and coming off of Mall Road and making a left? In that funnel, there is a, it sounds like what you just described, that two, will remain a one and a half lane because you're not going down that far. And therefore, that would be, all of that would funnel into then a one lane somewhere.
Sure.
Do I, do I see that right or?
So if I understand what you're saying, where I just showed the high school, south of the high school is not included in our project, and you're talking about traffic originating from south of the high school and driving north into our project, correct?
Yeah, which has available to it the one and a half.
Yeah.
To get around Mercedes and wherever.
Yep, so I can tell you that, you know, when we took our traffic counts, the traffic data that comes in, those counts don't necessarily differentiate where that traffic originated when you're going through that count location. However, all the counts that are within our corridor, you know, we captured the existing traffic that drives our project right now. So all of the traffic that comes off of that 128 and is going north, what's happening today is going to be captured in our traffic count data. And furthermore, I can tell you, when we started this project, it was, it was right at the peak of COVID when we started doing our traffic study. And so we worked with the state to be able to come up with some multiplying factors to make sure we're accounting for true traffic numbers. Because we had a concern that they might have been artificially low during COVID, and so we bumped up those numbers a little bit to make sure we were capturing full volume of Burlington that might not be reflected when people were initially just staying home and working from home in, you know, spring of 2020. So to answer your question, yes, we did consider where traffic originates and how it gets and how it operates within our project. But as soon as the car or the vehicle is within our project limits, you know, we no longer, it doesn't really matter for the project data where that car came from. It just matters that it's in our project limits now, and we need to account for it. So at the southern limit, where we've got, you know, four lanes right now, the way it already operates, we're assuming that this is not going to generate new vehicles coming to our project from 128, but that it'll be able to handle the existing volume of vehicles coming from 128. Does that answer your question?
Yes, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming down. Okay, we'll go to folks online. I see two hands up. Mr. Strauss, we'll take you first.
Thanks again, Chairman Priest. John Strauss, Precinct Four. And I had two questions for Peter. First question, if you had a chance to coordinate with Melissa about the Burlington Rapid Recovery Plan as you began this sidewalk improvement project? So did we get to talk with her?
Well, Melissa Tenicalis?
That's right.
Yes, yeah, she and I talk pretty frequently.
Oh, good, good. Okay, I just wanted to see if that was coordinated. And secondly, all the data that you're generating from this project, is this going to interfere in any way if at some point we decide to try to work with the MPO and begin a sort of a bigger reconstruction of the Route 3 corridor from the Woburn Line to the Bilirica Line or maybe even further?
That's a great question, and the short answer is no, this won't impact that. A little bit more detailed is what we're doing is structurally, from a civil standpoint, we're resurfacing the road, right? We're doing the mill and overlay. We're taking off two inches and putting back two inches. All of the design challenge, I don't want to say all, but the overwhelming majority of design challenges in this project came from traffic engineering. So it's taking the counts, forecasting the direction of traffic, making sure we can account for all the vehicles. All of that traffic study would still be relevant on a future, larger infrastructure project. So you mentioned, you know, expanding the corridor from, between Woburn and Bilirica. You know, something to that extent would be benefited by this project. We would be able to take all the traffic data we've collected and provide it to that project. Now, the results wouldn't be the same, the output wouldn't be the same because you'd be changing the geometry, but the inputs would remain constant, and that would be a huge benefit. The other part of this is that we're repairing and correcting the wearing course of the asphalt. That top two inches of the roadway is what the structural repair, that's the limit of our structural repair. So whether or not a future project came through, if we, if you were to widen the road by an extra 10 feet or something like that, what we're doing now would not deter that process. You would still widen the roadway the same way, and our current project, you know, might even mitigate some future construction need, right? If the way pavement preservation works, right now we're doing a mill and overlay project. I'm not familiar with what preventive treatments Burlington does, but there are chip seals and micro-surfacing and cape seals and different applications you can apply that if we do the mill and overlay now, you might be able to do a lesser treatment on this road when you do expand it for that larger corridor project, if and when it ever comes. So, long story short, the only impact to that larger corridor project would be beneficial from this one because it's more data to provide to that project study. And the only design element you'd be eliminating would be striping on this project. The striping would all have to get removed, but that happens anytime you mill a roadway anyway. So it wouldn't be a major loss in terms of opportunity cost.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, John. All right, and I see, our last hand up, and I'm sorry, I can't see who it is.
Andrew Moore.
Andrew Moore. All right, Mr. Moore, the floor is yours.
Is he off mute? Yeah, there we go. Okay. Hi, this is Andrew Moore, Precinct Seven. I just want to say, as someone who travels on Cambridge Street fairly frequently, I live like right off it, and basically every time I go on there, I'm just, I pray I don't get sideswiped. I just want to thank you so much for the work that you're doing, and I'm very excited to try out that new bike lane as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Andrew.
All right, thank you, Andrew. All right, if folks have further questions, obviously, we have the 17th of November, you know, and we'll make sure that Peter's email gets blasted out to everyone so he can field all your queries. Because he's obviously. Wait, yeah, yeah, it's phone number two. You might get the baby, though, just an FYI. So if you do leave a message, you'll get back to you as soon as possible. All right, Peter, Dan, thank you both so much for coming in. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you all for coming to listen on this. And with that, we can move on, I think. So let's go ahead and move to 664. We have a public hearing, trash contract renewal.
So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we just need to approve the notice as it was advertised. So I'm just going to go ahead and enter the motion on that.
Take a motion to approve the notice as advertised.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
All right.
I, opposed, abstain, 500. Okay, we are in a public hearing. John, Rachel, the floor is yours.
Paul, are you going to introduce anything or we just go through?
Why don't you start? Well, I could do an introduction just from the standpoint of the time has come for the town to renew its trash contract. And as is always the history, the Public Works Department provides the board with options in terms of, so that they can get some feedback from the board in terms of what type of contract the town would like to see for trash. We've been talking about this for a couple of months now. But at the same time, with that, I would turn it over to Rachel and John so they can talk about the potential options, and then hopefully we can get some feedback from the board in terms of what direction you would like us to go in in terms of the contract negotiation.
Thank you, Paul.
So we're just going to go through the options that we've had since the end of July, and for each one, I'll just mention the feedback we've received so far from the residents. So just for consideration, we're choosing basically between a three- and five-year contract renewal with Republic Services. We've spoken to the two other major haulers, and based on the inability to get equipment and staff, they won't be able to give us a new contract starting July 1, 2024. So this is the best option for the town. So the four options that we came up with for consideration just in order to save potential money going forward. The first step would be to eliminate yard waste. We have curbside yard waste collection. We have the highest number of weeks compared to the surrounding towns. We do about 17 weeks a year. And based on feedback we receive via email and on social media, the residents are definitely not in favor of this option. I think, you know, it's been a rocky process, but we're improving on yard waste collection currently. Another option we were considering would be to change to every other week for recycling. I would say this is the number one negative feedback from residents, again, on both social media and contacted us, you know, via email and called the DPW as well. So keep that in mind. Another option would be to move to four-day collection services. We didn't hear much feedback on this option. It wouldn't really impact us financially. It's just something that we're prepared to be presented with when we do a big request for proposal in a couple of years' time when we're ready to actually do that big negotiation with all three big haulers that we're anticipating getting quotes from. And the last one would be to charge a household fee for collection services. This was kind of a mixed bag. We had a lot of negative replies. We also had people saying that they wouldn't mind paying $100 a year, which comes out to $2.50 per collection in order to maintain services as they are today. We do like to keep in mind that, you know, not everyone's the same in their household. We have people living off of fixed incomes, so those are, that's the feedback from our four options that we've been presenting.
Okay, Paul.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Rachel and John, for all the work you've been doing on this. There is one other option, and that is to keep, if the board were to determine that the service is valuable, that valuable to the residents, is to keep things as is. The pressure that we've, the reason why we brought these options forward is really dealing with a very difficult time in terms of cost escalations here. So it is going to cost us more money if the board were interested in maintaining services. But in discussions with John and finance, and I, you know, we feel as though with the community support, that we will be able to work around that during the budget process if that was what the board, what direction the board wanted to go in. So that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, it's, you know, I'm going to turn to the board in a second, but, you know, the, we had talked recently about this, Rachel, right? And, you know, the amount of available service providers are shrinking because the larger providers are buying up the smaller providers, right? Which is causing us into, you know, having to have more of an open hand in negotiations, right? You know, which makes the whole supply and demand problem, getting rid of our trash and our cycling, that much harder to deal with because now we're negotiating with less chips on the table, which is really annoying. You know, and I know, I mean, we even loosely talked about the notion of what it would take to spin up our own municipal waste management service, and, you know, given the way things are going, that's not a bad option to even consider, to be honest. You know, I think we've all said that we don't like any of these options. You know, but I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking for a second and turn to the board. Mike, we'll start with you.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this has been, this has been a difficult issue for many years now, and it's trending in the wrong direction, unfortunately. Given the amount of time to negotiate a new contract or implement any of these recommendations, the one, actually, the one that I like is maybe create our own yard waste collection site or do something like that. But we just don't have time to implement something like that before we sign a contract. So I would, for the time being, until we can take, maybe drill down a little bit deeper on a yard waste composting-type facility in the next couple of years before the contract expires again, I think I would be, I think I would suggest that we just continue the current level of services with the town, perhaps on a three-year contract if we can get one, while we explore some additional options. Thanks.
Yeah. Joe?
Well, I feel like Mike does, I really think that the town should, we should try to have a talk to John about this earlier about trying to find a spot to have a own compost pile. You know, we've talked about a couple of locations, and, but right now, we're talking about the contract that's coming up, and we all know that whether it's Republic or the other three big ones out there, they're all having problems with drivers and who's going to come, and they're offering bonuses left and right. So right now, I firmly believe that the residents are more looking for what we really have and keep what we have. That's, that's the way I feel, you know. So, I mean, they get, they get picked up once a week and they get trash removal and debris removal. So I can't see us changing that for the taxes they're paying right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm also in agreement with my fellow board members. I think, looking at the services we have, I'd like to keep them the exact same. I have really no issue in moving to multi-day collection service. I don't know if that, we were talking about it, if it doesn't have much impact on the savings. We've also talked about maybe cutting down on the yard waste days, but, I mean, we're at 17 weeks, and I think you said the average was 11, 12 weeks for other towns. So it's, I don't know if that's going to really give us any savings impact. Also, I did want to thank both you and John for all the work you've done on this. I know it's a very hot and sticky issue, and I'd also just, like I said, like to go on the record and say I'm against charging any $100 fee for trash collection. These are tough times with inflation and everything, and people are, you know, looking at, you know, tightening their belt strings, and I think, you know, as Paul said, we should just, when come budget time, find a way to make it work, keep the services, and we just have to sharpen our pencil come budget time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going down the list, I agree with my fellow select board members. I think there are options with regards to yard waste, and this will give us the time to look at different options, whether it be composting or some other option. As far as recycling, I would absolutely not want to go to every other week for recycling because if you do that, recycling is good. Let's put it this way. Let's not reduce something that works, something that's good. Residents can get a larger recycling bin at their request, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So there are larger recycling bins, because I know we have the bigger of the two sizes. Absolutely, don't even think about changing recycling. Keep it the same. Don't go every other week because then people will throw trash into the recycling, recycling into trash. Four-day collection services, again, it's not really a money thing, but I agree we could look at it. And I'm opposed to any kind of fee, so to put it lightly, option number five, which Mr. Sagarino suggested, would probably be my preferred choice. Don't change a thing. Let's bite the bullet and, you know, do this for the residents.
Chairman, can I add one more thing? I forgot.
Go ahead.
One more thing I did want to say. I do want to take a good, hard look at composting as far as food waste goes, because I've been doing a lot of research and reading into it, and I see different conflicting things that it can save you a lot of money, and it doesn't, and it's, there's initial startup costs, but, I mean, it's good for the environment. I want us to do, take a good, hard look at that, maybe as an option for the future. Definitely just take a look at it. That's all I forgot to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, of course. Rachel, a couple of quick questions. The first is, are we, do we feel like going into whatever contract we're going to enter, we have to go to multi-day? Like, is that just what?
No.
Okay, so we can definitely stick with the one day. We're confident in that? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Do we feel like if we opted to go with a three-year contract, that that would provide us enough time to figure out what the next step is going to be? Or would you, would we recommend entering into a longer contract to buy us enough time to make sure that what happens next is right for Burlington?
So we will need about two years to get a new contract lined up. So even a three-year contract would allow us to do that, but it gives us about a year to figure out what we want to do next. The other part to look at is whether a five-year contract will provide us enough savings once we get the proposals and we study them. In the past, it had been that we had significant savings if we went to a five-year versus a three-year. So that's another reason to, I mean, we'll have to look at both options for that, too. But even the three-year will give us time to do a full IRFP and decide which direction. the town wants to, wants to go.
Okay. One more question, and I'll tell you. I was just reading that Reading is obviously experiencing difficulties, even if we enter into a contract, right? I know that we've talked about it before, but because we've got an audience, John, can you go into what controls are in place in the contract that allow us to push back on the vendor, should things go south?
So, so we have, and actually, we have issued fines before to the contractor that we currently have. But if I, and those are written into the contract, and they'll remain to any type of contracts that we will have. The biggest issue we're having right now, to say we, because we're all together in this, is, is we, as Northeast, or even as a country, we don't have enough truck traffic right now. We don't have enough equipment, we don't have enough trucks. We ordered a truck last year after town meeting in May, and we'd already been told that we're not gonna see it until after winter of this year. So there'll be going in two years to get a truck. So, so the vendors are not immune to that. All the contractors who provide this type of service buy trucks from the same places we buy trucks from. So the issues that we've been seeing around with different vendors, it's not unique to the town that you mentioned earlier, but it has happened to different vendors, is the inability to get people on equipment. I mean, we're suffering through that right now. So I will, I will venture to say that it's not like it used to be. Like, if you didn't like your vendor, you say, okay, see you later, and there'll be three or four more behind it, and in the very next day, you can line up. That is not what we have right now. This is not the environment we are at right now, unfortunately for, for us, as customers.
Yeah, okay. Joe, you have another question?
Yeah, just real quick, I wanna go, so, John, I remember when we signed our last contract, and we actually lucked out with that, because when we signed the last contract, they had to abide by the contract, and then COVID hit, and then we had all those increases, and they had, trash was costing thousands of dollars extra going all over the place. So according to what we're gonna do now, we'll sign another contract for three or five years, and that should help us out in the long run. Because we all know they wanted to charge us more money, but they were under contract, and they couldn't do that. Just so the residents know that what you guys do is for the long haul, you know what I mean? And keeping it the way it is, and what we're going to do, hopefully vote on this later on, whenever it comes up next, or we, probably tonight, or tonight, I should say. Just wanna say thank you for that, because if it wasn't for that, the cost of the town would've went up significantly in the past two years, shipping everything out across seas and China and every place else that it was going to.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Chairman, because we did have, during the pandemic, we had contractors that actually showed up to a town, not near, not too far away from here, and said, okay, we're not picking up the trash anymore, I'm out of business. And just like that, with like a day's notice, they stopped picking up trash and they went out of business. So obviously, they had to rush to get somebody else at a much higher price. We were lucky that, I mean, we had a contract, prices were set by the contract, and like, like you said, those are the costs that we have right now. But obviously, it's gonna be a significant increase coming up.
Well, that was just a kudos to you guys for having that contract signed, and then telling us what it was, what it could've been. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I keep circling back to this idea of like municipal wastes, you know, as a division that we'd have to seriously consider. I mean, is it, is it worth starting that conversation internally, understanding pricing and what it would take from an infrastructure to organizational standpoint? I mean, it just, it seems like our hands are being tied, you know, even if we say yeah to a contract, which obviously we have to do. You know, but I also don't wanna put even more of a burden on the community, because, I mean, I can imagine we're talking millions of dollars and, you know, vehicles and support, and then we still have to contract up to where the trash is gonna go. I mean, you start pulling that thread in that sweater, and it gets messy. You know, but I mean, I guess I'm just asking open endedly at this point.
Yeah, we definitely think it's worth the analysis, Mr. Chairman. When I was a young man, many municipalities had a trash department and picked up trash curbside. Over the course of time, contractors became a cheaper option, so a lot of, almost all municipalities went in that direction. But if the, the trash pickup market continues to be sort of unsteady over the, over the next three years, then I think it's definitely a worthwhile, something that we should consider as we're, we're moving forward and working on this contract and contemplating the next one. I think there are a couple of communities in this area that have municipal trash departments, Melrose and Natick.
Natick.
Come to mind, so it's not unheard of. And, you know, it might be a service that lends itself well to a regional partnership with us and neighboring communities as well. So we will, we will look into that.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the board before I turn this over to the public? No? Okay. So, John, if you could take your mic and face it toward the people, and then share that right, that mic with Rachel, so folks, you can come up and speak to this microphone. Maybe just grab one of the chairs up front, and you can, if folks want to talk, they can have a seat here, because now we're short on microphones. And we'll go ahead and take public comment here. So who'd like to speak on this? Anybody in the room? I see a hand in the back. Come on down. Just go ahead and identify yourself and, and where you live. I also wanna just mention while you're coming down, that we got a lot of emails about this. Just wanna thank everyone who submitted their thoughts and concerns around this. All of that will be entered into the record. I'm pointing to the pile of stuff in front of me right now, but just wanna make it known that, that folks have been emailing us since we first started talking about this. Anyways, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Zi Wang, and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct Five and a member of Land Use Committee. I live on Forklifer Road. I just have some questions and concerns. I made a chart and compared Billerica, Bedford, Ubern, Wilmington, and Lexington. So all five towns are not charging residents annual trash fee. Bedford's collecting trash on Wednesdays only, and the other four towns are collecting trash on multiple days a week. Uber and Wilmington are collecting recycle every other week, and the other three towns are collecting recycle every week, like us now. And all five towns are doing seasonal yard waste pickup like us now again. And then no town eliminated the yard waste so far. Regarding the hundred dollars fee, my question is, what's the difference between charging residents' fee versus the increase coming out of the town budget? I just don't think the town should charge fees for the new trash contract now. I also wanna point out that some of the, like you gentlemen already mentioned, that many towns, they have their own recycling yard waste and a composting facility, like Lexington's really, they have really big one. If we think about cutting like recycling collection and eliminating yard waste, maybe we should build our own town, like a recycling yard waste compost center. Do we have a location for this kind of operation? And I heard we, there used to be talk about the town to purchase the state soft shed. I don't know whether it's still something going on, or, you know, already finalized or something. Just wondering if we have certain locations like, for this kind of purpose. If we have a kitchen food waste composting facility, like Lexington, I think that would really reduce the weight from the regular trash and ultimately save on the cost of a tonnage tipping fee. As far I know, I think in 2021, municipal solid waste had an average tipping fee of fifty, fifty-four dollars per ton. I don't know how much they charge us, but I think our trash has been between like 1,700 to 2,000 ton per year. Again, I don't know the number, I just like found this online. And I think if we have our own recycling yard waste and composting facility, it'll help a lot, like saving a lot of money in the long run. I'm hoping the board and DPW do not charge residents extra fees and do not lose any services. Again, I think the multiple days collection is good, because it's not cutting any service. Maybe we can look into some like a long term solution, like a compost facility, again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zi. I feel like we covered some of what she talked about. Is there anything you wanna, you know, elaborate on that she was talking about?
So, I mean, I don't know if John or Paul wanna talk about taxes versus fees. I'll, I'll take the, as far as the section about the land, and I'll try to make it short, but we looked for land for about 15 years to try to build a new deep dollar facility. And so we could not find that kind of land in Burlington that, that will fit our needs. So, and we also looked at the salt shed area, which is owned by the state, and that was not a possibility for that, so. But perhaps there's something that the town should look at in the future. You know, again, if we go with a three year contract, maybe during the first year, look at the possibilities of how, where, into the future. Lexington also happened to have a, pretty much a dump, that's what they had, so it was fairly easy to transform what is already a dump into a compost facility, which thankfully, actually, we don't have one of those here, because it's more of a headache than anything else. But, so I think that was one of the questions that were there.
Yeah, definitely. I wonder if we could use Lexington's composts? I'm sure they'd love, they'd love that.
If we're sharing the weights and measures, we might as well extend the agreement.
Right, yeah, just go ahead and just bring our trucks right in, then they'll, they'll love us. Okay, thank you, John.
Winchester has one.
Anybody, anybody else in the room? Sherry, come on down. And sorry, if I didn't say it already, I'm trying to keep everyone to about three minutes, just as FYI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sherry Ellis, town meeting member from Precinct Three. I've had conversations with Mr. Sanchez, and I think with you, Nick, as well, too. And I appreciate all the work that, that's been done, and look forward to thinking about the future. And I know that there's a, I brought my paper with me, the, the solid waste master plan for Massachusetts. And I've had conversations with John about, you know, thinking about the future and composting and getting the food waste out of, you know, our trash, and how to do that, whether it's, we don't have a dump, maybe it's regional, maybe we make an agreement with Lexington, or Wilmington has one, something like that, where we can do a regional trash and recycling and composting. I appreciate we now take mattresses out, that's part of the master plan. So, so we're getting there, and I'm hoping in the next, whatever the contract is that, you know, you approve, that those years are spent really auditing what we do for trash, and going forward, really thinking about not just the money part of it, but also, you know, the economic, other, the sustainability parts of all of this, and really doing what we should be for the future. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Anybody else in the room?
Pat Angelo, Precinct Five, town meeting member. My son, one of them, lives in Rantham, and they only have recyclers picked up every other week. They have smaller trash barrels than we have. Their recycling barrel is big enough for a family of five. I've never seen such a huge barrel. They're bigger than the ones that we have. So it really makes everybody in the house, there's three kids in the house, it really makes them very conscientious about putting more things into the recycling, because their trash barrel is so small, and it seems to work for them. So that may be another option, you know, to be considered. Have you seen the bigger barrels? They're enormous. I mean, they really are. If you try to get something out of the bottom of it, you'd need a rope to pull yourself back out. I mean, it's, it's, they're big. But it makes the kids recycle. From the time they were small, they would go into the, my, my son's office where he had it, and they would put their recyclings into that bag, because they were trained to do it, and they're still doing it to these days. I mean, they're in their twenties now, and they're still doing it, but it seems to work, so it might be something else to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo. Anybody else in the room? Okay, I'm gonna go online, and then if someone changes their mind, feel free. Anybody online who'd like to comment on this?
Start three, the raise your hand.
Right, right, thank you, Paul. Start three. Mr. Bryan's got it, she knows how to raise her hand. She, she's a pro. Let's take her off mute.
Thank you, Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two, town meeting member and a member of the Land Use. I, I spent some time writing and sent an email to the select board members and to John and Rachel. I really support the direction that you are heading in terms of keeping the contract. John and his team have done a fantastic job maintaining vendor relationships, and in this kind of environment, it's, it is the relationships that count. And so I appreciate that we, despite bumps in the road, have really pretty terrific service here compared to other communities. So I do appreciate that you're heading in a direction that I think is the right one, and I would encourage the select board to try to figure out some sort of mechanism to provide additional support to John and Rachel and their team in terms of what we do moving forward, either in terms of a subcommittee to think about what we're gonna do, or, you know, consultants, something, because auditing what we do will inform what we need to do moving forward. Aligning with the master waste plan from the state is critical for the future. And, yeah, I just, I love, I love the direction this is going, and encourage the select board to support DPW in any way in terms of making future plans. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. O'Brien. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to the board for further discussion, comments. I guess my first question is, would you like us to decide on the length of contract tonight? And if so, I'd love to know that if there would be any cost savings in a five year before we do that.
So, so I think that it's prudent to wait a little longer before we go into the three of the five, but we do have guidance right now from what we heard from you, as far as, like, it sounds so, like you wanna keep the services as they are, so it's gonna make it easier as we move through the process. So it will not be until we're closer to see if there's really a, and if I, again, if I understand your, what you're saying to us, unless there are significant savings from going to a five year contract, you will prefer a three, so we can have a chance to do something different sooner. Am I?
Well, we'll continue, I mean, I think so, but without putting words in the rest of the words.
Right, we wouldn't, we're not, okay.
We'll defer to discussion, and then, yes, I think so. But, Joe, I saw you waving your hand here. Why don't you go first?
So, I think, I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the biggest thing was that you had said that it takes, it takes a good two years to write the contract. So if we do a three year contract, that gives you one year of a break, and then also we gotta jump right back into it again with the next contract. So if we can do a five year contract, it would be better for our staff. I don't know about the savings aspect of it, I'm sure there'll be somewhat of a savings, but then, on the other hand, I'm sure that at some point, there's an increase every single year because of whether it's gas, employees, just like we all have increases in taxes and everything else. So I think that, I think that if we can go for a five, that would be great, but you said earlier, it would take at least two years to write a new contract. So that only gives them one year to sit back and go, okay, I'm not doing anything, but there's a million other things going on in town at the same time, and that's not a big staff up there, not a big office.
Right.
So I just wanna get that out there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Mike?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Jim? Mike?
I, I just wanted to point out that we're, you know, just for the folks at home, and the folks in the tenants here, we're looking at at least a $500,000 increase, if not more. So that's, that's why it's such an interest in this, in this topic, and why we've been chewing on it for, for some time. I would prefer a three year program, so we could sort of gauge where the industry is going in that, in that time. But again, if there's, if there's significant savings in a five, I suppose I'd be agreeable with that, but my, my preference would be a three, so. And again, let's begin to drill down on, on, and explore some options for handling some of this ourselves.
Anything else? No? Okay. I guess where I get caught between the three and five year is, if we go with three, then we probably have to get somebody to help us look at what, you know, taking on ourselves and other options would be while we're writing, you know, working out the contract, because we wanna make sure that everyone's well staffed, and that there are other things that obviously you're doing, you know, and the rest of the staff are doing over the course of a regular day and month and year. So I would hate to put out more money to do it in three years, but I also don't wanna, like, bind this to five years if we don't necessarily have to, you know, because if we can jump and find out a solution sooner, I'd rather do that. But my guess is that the way with which, the speed with which, I guess, we, we wind up moving, five years might buy us- five years might buy us the right amount of time to situate ourselves, get ourselves prepared for whatever's next. So I'm currently leaning more to five. But I think overall, and you know, I don't know if you gents want to put this in the form of a vote or we just want to agree, is that what we're saying is we want to keep services as is and that we're not looking to do any kind of reduction and we're not looking to do any kind of fee, that we're gonna try and figure it out within the operating budget and make this work for us in the time that's allotted. And then we can decide based on the numbers that come back, whether it's three or five years and what makes the most sense. And hopefully by then, you know, we'll have a little bit more information on a couple other things and we can use it all in consideration to take a vote. John, in your estimate, how close to contract finalization would you need a vote from us? Like, are we looking at January? We look, when's, what are we talking?
So we have, I want to say before that, and the reason for that is if we do decide to do a five-year contract, we typically have an article for town meeting that we have to place for our five-year contract. So we'll have to get that through as well. So we'll need direction from you prior to it as well. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I can add one more thing about the three or the five years. We all know that typically people can't even go and buy a car off the lot anymore. And with trucks in the economy and personal, they'll go on to where it is. Something to keep in mind is whether a year from now, all those things will be stable enough, so when we put in a contract out, we'll get a fair price back. Because right now, a lot of the things are in flux. So perhaps five years may be better than three. I just want, I want to throw that out there, too, for you to think about that.
Yeah, it's a great point, John. We just don't know where things are gonna wind up in a year, two years from now. I guess we can only look from where we sit, you know, and plan for as many options as possible. Okay, anything else from the board?
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest, I think Mr. Sanchez is, I think our message has been loud and clear tonight. We're not interested in making any changes. We want to maintain the current thing. I would perhaps recommend that we postpone a vote on this article for a couple of months.
Yeah, I think that, you know, again, to Mr. Bryan's point, I think the direction is understood and that, so we don't need to take a vote on this until we're prepared to talk more finite about the contract itself.
Yep.
Fair assumption?
Yeah, that works for us.
All right.
Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, I was gonna ask, do we keep the public hearing open? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I think we'll close this one if we have to open another one.
Make a motion.
Okay, so.
Second.
Babe, second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, that closes the public hearing. We won't be taking any votes on this, but you guys let us know when you're ready to come back and discuss it further and we'll have you back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, who was interested in the topic. Thank you for joining us online. The meeting's not over. I'm just letting you know that if you were ever here for that.
You're going to the game.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone who was, who wants to get, you know, ready for the game tonight. All right, so let's go ahead and keep this party moving. Next out, six-six-five, we've got the sidewalk program.
You have to plug in.
Good evening, Tom Hayes, town engineer.
Tom, good to see you. Thanks for coming in tonight.
All right, have a quick PowerPoint. So if you'd be able with me. Do I need permission to share my phone?
No, you should be able to.
So, make that a little bigger, Tom. Does that work? What I want to talk about is sidewalk programs. So sidewalks have been a hot topic for a while and we're looking to the history of where we've been, what we're doing now and what we want to do. So, quick history, 1995, the select board voted to construct sidewalks in the town center and along main drags using the gold standard, which is concrete and granite. So concrete sidewalks with granite curbing. The, since that time, we've done a few projects from 97 through 13. There's four projects that were undertaken that were all capital projects that were appropriated by town meeting. So, 2013, a lot of discussion about sidewalks. So we started getting a small, kind of a pittance, $50,000 a year was incorporated into our capital budget. And then 14, the same, 2015, we got $100,000. 16, 250, we had a big sidewalk project over on Bedford Street, upgraded to concrete and granite. 17, big year, a million dollars. And the select board adopted a revised sidewalk policy. And I'll go through that quick, but it pretty much was the gateway streets, the main thoroughfares, and then the local streets. 19, sidewalk committee finalized their report. And then in '22, we had, the road bond was increased to 3.5 million and sidewalks were rolled into that. Not only sidewalks rehabilitation, but sidewalk, brand-new sidewalks. So the breakdown kind of goes like this. Every two years, we have a road bond. And the way it breaks down is 3.5 million, 2 million for streets, half a million for sidewalks, sidewalk rehab, which is existing sidewalks that we upgrade to the 2017 select board policy. Parking loss, another half million, and then new sidewalk construction, which we really don't have a program. And that's what I'd kind of want to push tonight is how we've developed a new sidewalk program. So three programs, like I said, we have new sidewalk construction. It's funded at 250 per year. So with that, half a million dollars stretches over the two-year period. Give me a second. The, so we have the gateway streets, the collector streets, and the neighborhood streets. So that was the breakdown for the brand-new sidewalks. For sidewalk rehabilitation, same thing, 250 per year, and that is to upgrade the existing sidewalks to the town standard. So this, there is, I'm sorry, I think I'm getting a little bit out of order. New sidewalk construction for new sidewalks, to fill the gaps or to build sidewalks on streets where we don't have sidewalks. Existing sidewalk rehabilitation is upgrading the existing sidewalks to the standard, the 2017 standard. And then we have a third program, which is in-house sidewalk rehabilitation, and that's using our DPW Highway Division. And they can go out and streets, mostly neighborhood streets that they can handle, where there's smaller sidewalks, they're separated by a grass strip. It's stuff they can do within a season. The new sidewalk program, what we used for guidance documents was the 2017 select board policy. And that, again, was the gateway streets, where we go the gold standard, granite and concrete, the collector, which is smaller streets, still main streets, Terrace Hall, excuse me, not Terrace Hall, but Peach Orchard, which was recently done. So that was granite curb with batuminous sidewalk. And then we have the neighborhood streets, local streets, dead-end streets, small sidewalks, we use batuminous sidewalks with batuminous curb. What we've also used to help build a program was the 2019 sidewalk committee survey. So we rolled these two documents together and that's where we came up with the prioritization process. So the first thing we did with all this data is streets that have existing sidewalks, we remove that from the list. If there's a sidewalk on the street, even if it's a street like Lexington, there's a sidewalk. So we're not gonna build a second sidewalk on the left side, if there's one on the right, just because there are streets in town that have no sidewalks, main streets. So that's the kind of thought process behind that. So we also want to select main streets that have either no sidewalks or gaps in the sidewalk network. We want to fill those gaps. And then finally, we're gonna coordinate with our paving programs, because there is economy of scale, there are overlap, so we can stretch the buck by doing the sidewalk as part of the paving program. Might be not done the same year, but it'll be done like the year after. So we build the sidewalks, we get all the wheelchair ramps in place, we correct a lot of the defects, and then we pave the following year so that we allow any sort of settlement that might have from the excavation for the curving of our, say, drainage structures or whatnot. So when we kind of crunch all that data, this is a list of candidates, all right? So these are all streets that would have either no sidewalks, gaps in sidewalks, main streets. And of those, these four kind of stood out. And the reason why they stood out is they're either part of our complete streets application that have been, you know, have been spinning for several years, or they dovetail together with another project and it would work well with an adjacent project that would build sidewalks and do upgrade, intersection upgrades, or other such roadwork. Yes, well, yeah, and these were also, as part of that, like I said, the two documents were rolled together. We have recommendations from the sidewalk committee as well as guidance from the Board of Selectmen. So for new sidewalk priorities, we are funding at 250 per year, okay? So sidewalks are not cheap. So from a construction schedule, say Blanchard Road, $500,000. So we can do that a couple of different ways. At 250 per year, we can do a two-year phase, or we can bank that 250 and then two years, complete that sidewalk. A second priority, South Bedford Street, again, it's close to 500, it's a two-year process. South Bedford, down where the, you know, down, kind of into, going into Woburn, there's no sidewalk there by the old military housing. The, that will dovetail in with a project. There's a tip project for the reconstruction of the intersection of South Bedford and Cambridge. So that would work together. If the state is building a portion of sidewalk and we're building a portion, they meet in the middle. So we get a bigger bang for the buck. Stony Brook, heavily traveled, adjacent to a park, adjacent to main roads, you know, connecting Lexington and Burlington Mall Road. And then finally, Locust. Locust, right adjacent to a school, it's a long run, main drag, could use sidewalks. So our recommendation is, this is, we feel this is a good plan to follow. It's doable, it's a 10-year plan. If we start 2024, conceivably at 250 per year, we could have it done by 2033. So it's not saying that we're gonna, like Locust, Locust is ready for repaving. We may actually repave Locust prior to putting the sidewalks in, but it would fit into the next cycle of paving, if that makes sense, because it's 10 years away. So existing sidewalk rehabilitation, we have the same thing, we're looking at 250 per year. And again, if we start at 2024, funding at that level, we have these streets, like Center Street, Center Street is, really should be paved next year. The problem with Center, it is a gateway street, requires the gold standard, there's two sidewalks, there's one on each side. So for that street, at 250 per year, it's five phases. It's $1.3 million, it's not cheap. So it's not gonna last five years. Center Street won't last, we can't defer it five years. Francis Wyman, not a gateway street, but a collector, 1.4 million. Win Street, again, a gold standard, 750,000. So our recommendation is not to build these to the gold standard. Let's take the 250 per year and do in-kind replacement, do repairs to the sidewalks. Maybe at some point in the future, on the next cycle, the next paving cycle, we can have the funds in the bank to appropriate a capital project that could do, upgrade these. But our recommendation now is just let us pave those roads and just repair the sidewalks in kind. So finally, the DPW in-house sidewalks. And here's a list of sidewalks that the DPW Highway is working on. And these are smaller neighborhood sidewalks, which, you know, they've been picking away at for many years. And this is their, this is their list. Right now, I believe they're working on Sparhawk. Kind of late in the season, may not get to the other streets, but you know, this is their hit list. And with that, are you here to answer any questions that I have?
Okay. Thank you, Tom, as always. Who haven't I started with tonight? Jim? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, as I mentioned to you the other day, on that new sidewalk list, the rationale of Locust Street being prioritized because it leads to a school, I'd like to see Donald and Vincent be moved up the list, so to speak. Vincent is adjacent to Fox Hill Road, which where a lot of walkers go to Fox Hill School. And Donald Road has historically had speeding issues and leads into Vincent, which leads to Fox Hill. So I'd like to see those two moved up the list for safety reasons.
Okay, you know, this is, I mean, these are all candidates and it's open up for discussion. There has been a lot of talk, especially with the available funds from the.
Safe Roads.
Safe Roads of School.
Safe Roads of School.
Signs of Lines.
Bob Kuna already dragged me into the lines and signs project they have going. So I had talked to Melissa Tentakalas about getting kind of a meeting of the minds and getting one together so we can collaborate and try to pool our efforts to go after money for sidewalks. And yeah, that neighborhood would be great, Vincent, Hart, Donald, to tie all that together with Fox Hill.
Thank you, also.
Okay, Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this one's a kind of a head-scratcher here. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if it's not time to, maybe we should amend our sidewalk policy to allow for some discretion of, you know, of our DPW staff. Center Street's a great example. They're saying, listen, yeah, the road needs to be done, but you know, the sidewalk's in really good condition and it's gonna, you know, chew up a lot of sidewalk money that could, you know, maybe be more equitably spread throughout the towns, particularly in, you know, some of those streets that have no sidewalks yet. But you know, I think we need some more discussion, but Tom needs to plan his spring projects. I would certainly be amenable to holding off on the sidewalk portion for the Center Street repaving project that you'd like to do this year while we discuss, you know, maybe amending the policy we have to allow for a more equitable distribution of those funds.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Joe?
No, I just agree with Mike, I think. Some of the streets and some of the sidewalks that are gonna get done, sidewalks really are in need of. I mean, so, and I do like the idea of leaving it up to the engineering department and Tom to decide what is going on with the sidewalks. I mean, we do have a sidewalk committee, which I know they get involved with, so I'd like to leave it up to you and Joe. And Rachel, you're sitting back there, but you're part of this.
Anything else? No. All good, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Sikler kind of stole some of my thunder at the beginning in Citizens Time. Talking to Melissa Masardo with the school committee that there's, she's doing a lot of work with the Safe Roads School Program and the Signs of Line, Signs of Line program you mentioned. Just want to make sure we're tapping in with those guys and see if we can get some state grant money to help and make that 250K in the annual, bigger than 250K, because she says a lot of grant money out there available. Hopefully, working with Bob Kuna and the schools, we can work together and get some of it for Burlington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely. Tom, remind me, I got my numbers right here. So when we spoke last, we were saying that on average, the cost per linear foot of sidewalk is now at $200.
Close, the last sidewalk project we did, Beacon, Beacon Street, it was like $190 per linear foot.
Yeah, so it might as well be 200. That's expensive and I get it, right? Mike, you had a great idea around Blanchard Road and South Bedford Street in terms of.
Why not? You don't want to go there?
All right, well then, well, all right. I think there are other sources of funding that we can absolutely go after to expedite this 10-year plan. Obviously, I think that, I mean, as always, you did a great job. And I think this is a very viable 10-year plan and I'm fine with, you know, elevating Vincent and Donald if we wanted to because they're, you know, school connectors. But I think that there's money out there for us to go after that we absolutely should. I agree with Mike, I think that we should take a look at the sidewalk policy the next couple of months, you know, consider, you know, anything, Brian, that you're funding when it comes to the crosswalks and, you know, maybe include that and just make it one big, you know, maybe pedestrian, you know, sidewalk, crosswalk policy that we can look at. And then I, you know, I said before that, you know, I don't think that the funding is adequate, to be quite frank. You know, 250K, you know, to do sidewalks runs out real fast, you know, and now we're playing a 10-year-long game. playing a 10-year-long game, and as, as we're doing, right, things are falling apart behind us, and we're caught. I know we'll never be officially caught up in that infrastructure is, is a game of, you know, rinse and repeat, but, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to the notion of asking Town Meeting for a few more dollars, so that we can make sure that projects get done in a more timely and efficient manner, knowing how important, you know, sidewalks are to the community. You know, so I'm just, I'm, I'm using this as a platform to, you know, open my big mouth. But, you know, I think, I think that we should absolutely be pursuing that heading into the next budget, budget cycle, to get, to get you guys more funding, to get the work done. And we can let Town Meeting decide if they, whether they want to put the dollars or not, and that's totally fine. As for, as for this, you know, you know, I'll stop talking and go back to the board, but, you know, Jim, because you had the recommendation of the road swap, I assume if you, if you want to make the motion on that, you know, to make the change, but any other questions, comments from the board at this time, or Tom, Paul, John, anything you guys want to add? Do that now? No?
I just wanted to thank them for their efforts, I forgot to do that, really, I know it's a lot, a lot to grasp and get your arms around, so I do appreciate the efforts.
So if I may, oh, sorry.
I was going to ask you, does that need to be specified in the motion, or can you just look at that without having to include that?
Yeah, I think if this maybe set the, set the stage, and as we, you know, talk with the schools, talk with, I know Planning has a, a project in the queue for Blanchard and Muller, so I think we can kind of formulate a, a better plan moving forward, maybe come, come back to the board with a, with a list, and prioritize that list, and kind of firm it up.
All right, so then, if that's the case, then let's just continue this. We won't take any votes tonight, and then, you know, offline, we can look at, you know, we should look at, you know, a, a hold on the warrant, and then we should discuss what that language is at the boards. In favor of that, you guys can tell me to go up on sand. And then, you know, as well as the, the policy, we can look at that as well.
Yeah, I was going to just add that, I mean, obviously, we, we like doing projects, so if there's plenty of funding, we could build the sidewalks. But in the meantime, we do start planning right now for what we're going to construct the next year, and so we're suggesting, and one of the recommendations is that if a sidewalk is in relatively good condition, that we are gonna not upgrade it to the 2017 standard. And that's a point that I hope we all agree on, because if not, we're going to be stealing money away from other places to actually do that. So that's one thing that we probably have to decide sooner rather than later, as we go into the season, that's when we do surveying and design for the following year, and that will, particularly in Center Street, it'll, it'll dictate what we'll do over the winter.
Sure. Yeah, so I mean, if, if we aim to have you guys back at our, it's the 14th, right, it's our next meeting? At the 14th, does that give you guys enough time to plan?
Yeah, we can, we can, I think we can put something together.
Okay. All right. All right, then let's do that, let's continue this to the 14th, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Next up, item 666. What's about that? Town common policy. So we've, we've had this before us a couple times. We've read it, we've reviewed it. I guess at this point, we can circle back around the horn for further questions, comments, and then, and then go from there. All right? Mr. Espia, why don't you kick us off?
Uh, no, I'm, we've been through this a bunch already, I'm good with the way it's written, no comment further.
Okay, Joe?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Oh, fine.
Okay. Jim?
Nothing here.
Okay. So I got to open my mouth then. So I had just a couple quick questions. So because we mentioned the gazebo, do we need to mention the Sculpture Park? Assuming that Sculpture Park is included, which I believe is.
I believe it says it right on top.
Does it?
On a broken juice of Town Common and Sculpture Park.
Come on now.
Yes, sir.
See, look at that, it's the first sentence, all together.
Okay, next.
All right. Moving right along. We mentioned the flag policy, which currently doesn't exist. Do we want to take it out for now and then add it back in once we land on that, or...
Yeah, I think we can take it out, since there is no policy at this point.
Right, yeah.
Or refer to the policy, which there is no policy.
Right, it's like, you know, turn to page 86, and there's no page 86. Okay, and then, I, I'd asked a little others earlier, and I'm still confused, we're reverting back to the original language about the dogs on the common, that they're allowable when there is an event, but that they should be on a leash when they're at an event?
You can't, you can't make anyone leash dog, we don't have leash law in Burlington, so you can't add that.
Okay, so...
There is no leash law.
No.
One of the dogs is in your control, that's the law.
That's the law.
Your dog does not have to be on a leash.
Okay, so then, is there any liability concern around having dogs at events?
It hasn't been so far.
Liability for everything, as it should.
Yeah?
Liable for the things we haven't even thought of yet.
Sure. Okay.
Just leave it the way it is.
Okay, no, I, I probably wouldn't, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the waters, but I believe REC has a very specific policy during their events regarding dogs, but that's separate, I guess, from our overall town common policy.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that. So I'm going to vote on this, but, I mean, I wonder if we, we continue this and figure out what REC has in theirs may be included in ours for consistency's sake?
It's not a problem, we can postpone this while, you know, for another meeting as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, Miles will get it right, right?
That seems to be the only sticky wicked, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, everything else is, is more or less addressed, I mean, okay. All right, let's do that. I mean, if you, if you guys are okay, I'm not, you know, we'll, we'll postpone, we'll, we'll amend language to maybe be consistent, and then we can take it back at the 14th?
Sure.
All right. Hey, you know, just keep kicking the can down the road. Steve, you got your hand up? Come on down.
Steve Moore in precinct 3 Bedford Street. If the state has a leash law, then what would be the problem with including it in the language on the, on the town side? Because the, the state law would trump the, the lack of a town law.
It's a fair question.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Get clarity on that for us?
I do not know either.
Thank you, Steve. Since we opened it up, anybody else? Okay. All right, then we will, we'll bring it back. Moving right along, 667 Sealer of Weights and Measures, this is a, this is a fun one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we've had this in our packet before. As the board recalls, the state canceled a bunch of communities from doing the Sealer of Weights and Measure services. That's the final agreement, it's also going to the Lexington Select Board this week, and that will allow us to share a sealer. It's approximately 2/3rd Burlington, 1/3rd Lexington, just based upon the amount of devices, if you think of the differences between the two towns, we have a lot of things to be sealed, they have less. And we feel once we have the boards sign off on this agreement, that job will be posted, and we'll be looking for a sealer in conjunction with the town of Lexington to do both houses.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions? Mr. Espia, I'll start with you.
No, and can we get to use their compost facility?
That's the trade-off.
I looked through it, looks pretty good, and I like that we're working with Lexington, 2/3rd us, 1/3rd them, and if we work out good, and we can find someone good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
I just think I'm going to wait to sign up for this. Tell me, I want to join.
This is the third time you mentioned it, I think we...
Could be the fourth.
Mike, anything?
I, I have nothing, no, that's fine, I think that's great work on Lexington, it's a great idea.
Okay.
His, his thought is lie to Joe, tell him someplace else, so he can go get it.
Yeah, he's going to send you the wrong link, so he can apply. Sorry, Jim, was there anything?
No, no, good.
Okay. Just a couple quick things from me. In number, where was it? Number eight, Burlington shall bill the Lexington for, I don't know if the word Lexington shouldn't be there, or there's a word after Lexington that was accidentally omitted, it's just a clerical thing, I'm just pointing it out.
Where was that, Nick?
On, I don't know what page it is, but it's number eight in section D. Thank you, Mike.
D8.
Yeah, D8. Burlington shall bill the Lexington.
Gotcha, got it, see it.
Town of, yeah, whatever I was supposed to say. I was unclear reading it who this person technically reports to. So like, do they have a point of contact in each town?
Yes.
Okay, and that's our department?
The town administrator in Burlington, I believe it's the building commissioner in Lexington.
Okay. Do we know how the interview process is going to work?
Jointly.
Jointly, so both HR teams are going to...
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, cool, but I had nothing else. So gentlemen, if there are no further questions, I'll shoot a motion.
I think motion of food, the sealer awaits measures in the intermunicipal agreement.
Second. Okay, motion been made and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay, 668 Subcommittee Reports, Mike, run it.
Is it Zappy or Jones? Other than that, I, I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have was mentioned earlier by Mr. LaRue, the Halloween event, Paint the Pumpkin at the Sculpture Park, it's this Saturday, 9 to 11.
Okay. Mr. Espia?
All set, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Joe?
I didn't forget tonight. I have nothing, everyone knows it's hunting season, I've said it 9,000 times.
Right. All right. 669 Chairman's Report, I'm just going to say that I appreciate everyone doing the trunk or treat this past weekend, it's a great event, I wasn't able to attend, but I saw great pictures, I know, Mike, you were there with your nieces, right?
Yep.
I got my pumpkin on tonight, obviously Halloween's on Monday, next Monday, so please, you know, if you're going trick-or-treating, be safe, you know, out there, and obviously watch for, you know, people in costumes walking around looking for candy, so we can, you know, minimize calls to the Burlington Police Department. It can be a great night, or it can be a really sour night, so let's have, let's have some good, safe fun. Other than that, I have nothing for this evening, so with that, I will end, oh, Paul, Town Administrator, I almost forgot you tonight, Town Administrator's report.
I just have a couple of things for the chairman. I just wanted to thank Jeff Jabona from JR Trucking for volunteering to let her the town's new police motorcycle, it was a very generous thing, Jeff's a Town Meeting member. I didn't mean to embarrass him, because I didn't expect him to be here, but I do want to thank him, he was very generous, we have so many generous citizens within the town.
Thank you.
Secondly, on Saturday, early voting started here at the town hall, so was able to stop in, and I think Amy said we had 72 voters on Saturday, so it was a good start to the election season, there were folks voting in here today, and will be voting, dates are available on the town clerk's website. And lastly, also on Saturday, I was able to swing through the Board of Health, held a flu clinic, as usual, kudos to them, very organized, 100 volunteers, no waiting, no lines, and a very efficient operation as usual from our Board of Health, so I just wanted to thank them as well.
Absolutely, thank you, Paul. All right, if there's something else, gentlemen, I'll shoot a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Made and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Good night, everybody.